Welcome to the Tuesday, November 25th, meeting of the Air Planning Board. This meeting hearing of the Air Planning Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with a particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID 9787728220, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Amy Ruiz, not planner, D R U I Z at air.m a.us or 9787728220, extension 144, prior to the meeting. First item is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Do I have any discussion or any alterations or suggestions? Hearing none. Ken?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Agenda's approved.
Just so that everyone knows, Kathleen is not going to be here tonight. She is going to, she's on a flight. So, um, the public hearing, this is the opening of the public hearing, so it's not going to affect, because she can mull over there, just so that we know.
So the first item is the public meeting for the A and R, Lincoln Hill.
Yes.
Danny, would you explain what this is? We've approved the site plan. What is up?
Yes. So, and just so that everyone knows, this is a public meeting, not a public hearing. So there is no notifications on this, because this is an A and R application. So in A and R application, what that is, is basically the changing of lines on the interior portion of a property. They're not changing the exterior portions of the property lines, it's just all internal. So there is no approval from the board. The board does not approve anything. The board is just reviewing, does it meet our dimensional requirements in the zoning bylaws? And then if it does, then you meet the burden to endorse it at that point. So, the application before you right now, let me just zoom in a little bit. So what this one is, is for the Lincoln Hill project. This came out of the request from the, um, from the decision that a, um, the applicant come back with a plan of land showing the updated lines that came out of the approval. Basically showing the limits of the open space and the residential development. This also includes the creation of parcel A, which is the driveway parking lot area, and parcel B, which is going to be part of the open space. This does show the proposed drainage easement, and it also excludes out the 25-foot, um, right-of-way or easement as, um, for the Cozera parcel, as well as for the Yates parcel. So that's not included in the open space designation either. When you do add up the open space, it comes out to the 8.06, which was approved. That's going to be the area that's going to be under the conservation restriction. But, that'll come at a later date. The conservation restriction plan will come towards the end of the project. The residential development lot, that's what is outlined as part of where the, the actual development will actually be. So this, this meets all of our zoning requirements. There's no, um, there's nothing out of the ordinary on this one. If the board has any questions, the fields are here.
I open it up to my colleagues.
Yeah, just double-check the math for me, would you, on the plan?
Or?
Was that your total open space?
Did you include the drainage easement?
I'm just asking you.
Oh, I just, I did. Yeah, it's 8.06. And, uh, through the chair to Danny. To be clear, the A and R is just creating parcels A and B, and shifting the internal lines on the residential and open space.
Okay. Public input.
Wait, wait a minute, well, there's no public input. Okay, so I have... Double-check it again.
I'll run through it for you right now.
I might be, I'm missing one here.
Okay.
So parcel B, I got a 1.58.
Yep, 1.58 plus 1.31,
Right.
plus 1.27, plus 3.9.
Okay, thank you.
8.06.
That's what was missing, the 1.07, right?
Yeah, the easement.
So, the, I think, the thing that was important to me was to see, to see that the perimeter of the property was identified with meets and bounds. So we can see that the perimeter of the property is totally measured all the way around the perimeter. And that indicates the new connection of all the older lots that were there, basically. There was a number of new lots that were put together here. So, yeah, there's really not much to it. And then the 5.4 is basically where the construction is going to occur, plus the utility easement's going to have.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, we've looked at it a lot, so.
Yeah, it's more of just, this was one of the requirements that we requested prior to the site plan.
Letter in.
Yep. Now, when we, the...
I did.
All right, I'd like to open up for public input, starting with the room.
Yeah, of course, it's a public meeting, comments allowed.
Are there questions or comments for anyone in the room? Okay, hearing none. Anyone on Zoom have a question or comment regarding the A and R before us? All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the planning board endorse the plan of land here in Massachusetts prepared for Lincoln Hill developers dated October 2025. The A and R plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ken?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Of course.
I have it, Herbie.
Oh, wow. Look at that, perfect. Do you want to just take a couple minutes to sign it, and that way I can give this to the fields to the...
Yep.
I would have figured Ken also had one too.
Oh, see, there it is. It says more ink.
Yep, that works.
Well, here's a shot of mine.
Oh, sure.
We'll just take a couple minutes and sign it really quickly.
Perfect, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
It's because they don't give us pockets. Probably need more pockets.
Yeah, good night. Thank you.
We're opening this public hearing, right? We didn't open it before, right?
We did not.
Yeah, so, um, who would like to make a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll do that.
All right, thanks, Nathan.
I move that we open the public hearing for 35 Park Street, map 26 parcel 105, application for site plan review and special permit.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ken?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. The public hearing is open. And who is representing the applicant for us? Hello, sir. If you give us your name and...
Let me just before we...
Oh, okay.
Just explain what happened.
Well, let me just tell you who he is, and then you'll go to you.
Go ahead, sir.
Ryan Proctor with Dillison Roy, City of San Diego.
Ryan Proctor, thank you, sir.
So at the last planning board hearing in October, we were, uh, this was supposed to come before us to open. It was discovered during, um, prior to the meeting that the proposal, as it was written, was written incorrectly. So when we notified it and put it in the, um, in the newspaper, as well as the abutters notification, it was incorrect. So it originally had said six residential spaces with six commercial, or office spaces. It was revised, they amended their application, resubmitted for a full application, re-notified, and it now states that it's, um, consisting of a commercial space on the first floor and 12 residential units on the upper levels. So that's the proper description of the project. I'll turn it over to Ryan.
Great. Thank you once again, Ryan Proctor, Dillison Roy. I'm joined by Frank Mepartland from Dillison Roy, as well as Zach Downing and Amanda Lombardo from Emerald Design Build, the architects and designers for this project. We are before you tonight for, with two applications, the first of which is a site plan review application for the construction of the multifamily structure, and the second of which is a special permit application for a shared parking configuration for the site.
May I interrupt you for one second, what I'm saying? And this falls under site plan review because...
Yes, so this triggers site plan review. This is multifamily under the Form Base Code, so it triggers, just because it falls within that residential increase and also creation of parking spaces and creation of multifamily and residential.
Within the Form Base Code.
And then there's also the special permit, special permit, which is...
For the parking.
Which is for the parking, the shared parking.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, absolutely, you're welcome. So the site is located at 35 Park Street, which is adjacent to the previous location of the Santander Bank. It's also abutted by the rail trail to the east of the property and across the street from the town parking area on Park Street. The site has historically been used as a small retail and service store. The building has been vacant for some time. It's the White Building, for those that are familiar with the area there. The lot itself is very small, it's about 5,300 square feet. And as Danny just mentioned, is located within the downtown Park Street Form Base Code zoning district. So the application that we've submitted and the architectural designs have been catered to comply and meet the intent of those, of that Form Base Code. As was written to the record, the proposed project consists of, it's essentially a multifamily building with a commercial space on the first floor. So on the lower level, there'll be a grab-and-go style, takeout-only coffee and, uh, and bagel shop on the first floor. And there will be on the upper three floors, a total of 12 residential units, three of which will be one-bedroom apartments, and nine of which will be two-bed apartments. To provide parking on-site, we have configured the building so that we're providing a total of six spaces on the lower level. It will essentially be covered parking with exposed sides, but that will be accessible from Park Street. Five of those spaces are traditional parking spaces, and one of which will be van-accessible. To provide an additional six parking spaces, we are, we did submit a shared parking agreement between the owners of this property and the owners of Seven Depot Square, which is on the other side of Main Street. It's approximately 400 feet from this development, and it's all accessible via crosswalk and easily accessible to downtown Main Street as well. For lighting on the building, we are providing lighting on the awning. So as depicted in the Form Base Code, we are in the T6 sub-district of that, which encourages an awning over the sidewalk. So we will have one of those over the sidewalk that's currently existing within Park Street. There will be overhead lighting along the storefront and provide light for the uses of that sidewalk. And additionally, we will have lighting underneath the building where the parking is proposed, just for the use of that facility for safety purposes. We are not proposing any wall packs or any flood lighting as, as part of this project.
That's good.
Yeah.
Within the lower level, actually you can see on this plan, we are providing internal trash and bicycle storage. So we'll contain the trash within the site, and then we will also encourage the use of bicycles in an area like this, where the users of the facility can store them in that lower level of the building. For landscaping, again, consistent with the Form Base Code, we are proposing, uh, along the street frontage, some elevated landscape islands. Those would be along the storefront and adjacent, and, yep, thanks Danny, right along the street, and then adjacent to that commercial portion of the, the structure entrance as well. And lastly, the building itself will be connected to, there are existing utilities that have previously serviced the existing building at 35 Park Street. We are proposing to connect in that same location. However, we did receive a comment from the DPW that we wanted to replace those entirely, those connections that are there now. So we do intend to do that. Because of the error on our part with the legal notice, we did have the opportunity to review and respond to several comments that we received from various town departments. So about, I think about two weeks ago now, we submitted a comprehensive letter replying to all of those. I won't go through every single one of them, but if there's any questions on any particular items, I'd be happy to take them. And if there's any architectural-related questions, the Emerald team is here as well to talk to those. So with that, happy to take any questions.
Just to, on, on the comment, so I didn't, uh, the DPW did provide a second round of comments. I have not, no other, there's only been DPW. I have not sent that over to the applicant, just because I wanted to get the public hearing open before we really started the second round of, of comments going. But I will get those over to the applicant. I just received them yesterday. And, uh, so I have had a chance to, to review, um, of their comments regarding, for the town planners' comments, and they've addressed all of my concerns.
Oh, okay, they have.
I know DPW has some additional comments, and there's some other departments that will need to provide any additional comments that they may have. But, um, I think as of right now, we're in a good place with the comment, with their comment letter. The, the draft agreement for the parking has been reviewed by town council. I'll get you those comments as well, so that you can, um, get those addressed. There was not, nothing too major. I believe I did give them to the board here on an email, since they're town council, they're confidential. We're not supposed to send you the exact email, but I'll get you the comments that they stated.
Great, thank you.
So the comments, the, the board has to, for them to start considering on that. Regarding, I think at this point, I would, you know, open it up to the board.
Yeah, I'd like to start.
Can you go back to the site plan and just start at the beginning of the site plan?
Yes.
Do you already have a partner for the, the coffee bagel place that's involved in this, or is that speculative? I'm just curious.
Not that I'm aware of, at this point.
I think it should all place somewhere.
It's place, okay. So making coffee and toasting donuts doesn't count as, as cooking to the Board of Health? It's not?
What health responded?
Oh.
No, they, yeah, they responded to the Board of Health, but the Board of Health has not had a chance to respond to their comments yet.
All right.
No, the, the Board of Health provided their initial comment.
Okay, got it.
And the applicant did respond to them, but I have not gotten those to the, I have not gotten a second round yet. But, um...
So just for clarification, we're looking at the original...
Yep.
Department head responses?
Exactly.
In a response by the applicant to those?
Yes.
Your concern, we need to go to the next level, get feedback from the department heads to make sure they agree?
Yes. Correct. I just did not want to take that next step yet until we opened the public hearing.
That's good.
Is kind of what we ran into with Stratton Hill, remember?
No. Okay, so that's the existing conditions, um, plan?
Correct. Yes.
Have you identified, I, I saw some flags out there. I'm not sure if we're going to do a site visit or not, because it's, the lot is tiny, we can walk around on our own. But have you put flags in the back corners of the lot at all?
I believe we have, yeah. There's some iron rods that are called out on that plan that indicate the, the property boundaries in the back. So I, I imagine that there would be flags on those.
I didn't see you. I was out there a couple of days ago. Saw one hanging on a tree over there. Thought it might be important to just identify that corner.
Okay.
This one, it looks like this one was put in by Ross.
Yeah.
This one was put in by Ross. This one was an existing one, and this one is an existing one.
Okay, so there's an iron rod, you think out there, is that basically what we're talking about?
Yeah, exactly. Yep, at all, at all corners.
While you're on that, Ken? Do we know, are there any encroachments or deed, deed right-of-ways on this property? Okay.
No, no issues like we have on the other Park Street project that we ran into?
Good question.
Good question, yes.
And the land that is behind the building, that land is under the control of the Town of Air, right?
That's right. You can, uh, those two parallel lines on the far right is the rail, the limit's the rail trail.
Yeah, okay.
That's right.
This land is owned by the...
Yes. Yep, yep.
And on the left as well.
Yes, I believe this is also, there's like a, there's a weird, like, triangle sliver here that, yeah.
No removal for the...
For the, yeah, for the garage. They actually drop it down here.
How do you want to do this?
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah, frame up what we can do this evening, thank you. So, just quickly, this is the Form Base Code. So the way the process is supposed to work is, um, and I'll pull up the actual zoning bylaws so that, uh, we can kind of just go step by step as to what the Form Base Code actually calls out for. Basically what it does is... So it sets forth basically four steps that you follow. All right, so here are the four basic steps to use the code. So the first one is reviewing the regulating plan. Find your property parcel of interest. Note that the transit color of the parcel, the color of the, the color is keyed to the applicable building development standard for the buildings, for the frontage, that, uh, street or streets in particular, through, you know, for the transit zone. And then there's, so basically you look at the regulating plan with the building standards. You follow that building development standards, which talks about building height, building placement, you know, what it's supposed to look like, uh, as well as placement of parking. You know, first, third layer, first layer, third, second layer, third layer. There's all these kind of criteria that they follow. Glazing, there's all of these building standards. Then you review the frontage types, which on this one, I believe it was the arcade or the gallery.
Uh, I think it's arcade.
It's just, the architectural's having...
It is the art, uh, the gallery.
Gallery.
Yeah, so it's the gallery one, which is the one where it has the awning over, and extends the full length of the sidewalk.
In front of the, not where the parking, where you're going to park, it's...
No, it's in front of the, the portion of the building. Yep, so it follows that. And then the next step, it says, is to review the parking requirements and the use table. So with this one, the use table, because this has a commercial on the first floor, as well as residential, this meets the permitted by, by, by right. The only, um, uh, special permit that falls into here is the shared parking, which is under, you know, um, our zoning parking, our parking requirements under section nine, which we'll get to in a minute. And so when you look at the parking requirements here, uh, they had to provide one unit, uh, one parking space per unit. There's 12, uh, units, so one, they would have a total of 12. They have six on-site.
And there's no obligation for the commercial?
No, correct. Within the, um, Form Base Code, uh, there is no requirement for commercial space for, um, parking. So...
I was going to ask you, a trick question, but it's not so tricky. So, since the application was delayed,
Yes.
since we've ordered a town meeting to drop the requirement to a half per residential unit.
Yes.
Why doesn't that apply here, that they only need six spaces?
The application... The, I would say...
Zoning changes go into effect, as you know, as...
Is, is, is the advertising. Correct.
By it.
I will confirm on that one. I, I mean, it was delayed, the application was never, was resubmitted. So, I'll have to double-check on that, on whether that applies to this one anymore. I mean, if this does apply.
In the event that it does apply, then there's no special permit required.
Then, then they wouldn't be required for that special permit, correct.
Right, so we should not decide the special permit tonight, this evening?
No, I mean, the intent is... Yeah, yeah, no, the, I don't intend on, um, suggesting that the board make any determination on anything, right? Because we still need to review comments, uh, you know, send out those comments, the responses to the other departments have them, get back to those as well. And if the board has any, you know, comments that they may, the board may have regarding any of the plans. So I think we're still, this is the initial, you know, jump-off meeting to kind of just go through the bulk of everything, the presentation, and then, um, at the next meeting, really go in-depth into whatever comments the board may have on the, uh, response to comments.
Yeah, I think this is the first multifamily apartment complex that we've...
It's the first Form Base Code.
It's the first Form Base Code, but it's also the first multifamily apartment...
Yeah.
Complex that we've, we've addressed here.
Yeah.
So I just want to be sure, you know, because both of those things are novel to us, that, you know, obviously, you, you make sure we have these, all those issues covered.
Yep.
That it, that may be unique to them.
So my comment about the parking would apply in this event, because it was any unit, right? Didn't matter how many bedrooms it was, it was a half per...
Per unit, yeah.
Per unit. Bedroom count didn't matter. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, so in the end, if, if, if that does apply, they would only be required to have six on, on-site. And obviously, it'd be up to them if they want to keep that shared parking agreement.
Well, they may still want the agreement.
They might.
I mean, it would still be, it would still be a special permit.
It might still be, right.
Yes.
Because it's off-site.
Because it's off-site, correct.
So the only thing that would change...
It's whether or not it's a requirement. Yeah.
Could you do me a favor and go to the architectural, because I, the architectials that I saw clearly pointed out they were compliance with the Form Base Code. There was a table in there.
Yes.
Be like the amount of glass on the first floor, et cetera, yeah.
Right here.
Yeah, and there are responses, there's, um, intent of the code at the very bottom of this, and Emerald did, did provide responses in how this project meets all those criteria as well.
Yes, uh, so it states, you know, this parcel falls within...
Not in that, I can see it, I can see it, thank you.
So this one falls within the T6 zone. The multifamily is a permitted by right use. But since this one also includes commercial, that's also by right as well. The Form Base Code, so they go through this development standards, which is 10.411, which is for the T6 zone specifically for that one, which is, you know...
Before we changed it.
Yeah, correct. The off-street parking requirements.
Should say before town meeting changed it.
Yes. So the off-street parking, that's where this comes into the discussion, whether it's required or not required. And, uh, so they talk about the, um, the building frontage, which is the gallery, which we did talk about, where the off-street parking must be located in the second or third la, um, layer, which this one is in the, in the second and third. And here are all the building development standards. So front setback zero, front, um, setback secondary is zero. Side setback is, minimum is required zero, they have two and a half. Rear is zero, um, they're providing zero. Lot width is 24 feet wide minimum, they have 60. Lot coverage is 90%, they're at 90%. And they have kind of a breakdown right here. Build, so the build-out at the frontage is 90% at the front. They're at 62 and 96, see the plan, that's basically, uh, the garage, uh, the, uh, the front of the building plus the, um, parking, um, area along the frontage. The building is three to four stories requi, um, the requirement. They have four stories, uh, building width minimum is 16 feet, they have 58 feet. The front facade, so this is how much of the, the front has to be built up for window, 60 to 90%. Right now, it's at 75%. And then the upper, it says, to be determined. So, um, at this point, that one, I think, so that would be the only one that is, is still kind of up for determination on that one. And that's the building commissioner would have to make that determination on that.
Okay.
And then they did go through the goals of the downtown Park Street Form Base Code district to be met. A, so the first one is to lessen the escalating tax impact on the costly sprawling and unsustainable development pattern for both residential and commercial taxpayers. A 12-unit building within the existing downtown infrastructure would reduce the need for costly expansion of road, utilities and emergency services. By focusing development in an area already served by municipal services, it avoids the financial burden associated with extending... financial burden associated with extending infrastructure to remote areas. B is generate the maximum amount of municipal real estate tax revenue through concentrated and sustainable land development in downtown air. A multi-unit uh, development in the downtown core increases the tax base per acre compared to the low-density suburban development. Uh, by utilizing the compact footprint with multiple residences, the project generates a high real estate tax revenue while requiring fewer municipal services than uh, dispersed single-family housing. It also utilizes a site in the T six zone that has not been occupied in years. Uh, C, preserve the areas uh, remaining rural open space and limited undeveloped land resource by concentrating the development within the downtown district.
Hey Danny?
Yes.
Could we just direct people to find this online, would that be acceptable?
Yes, yes, that's, yep, so um, basically we, you, if you go on the um, towns on our website for the current application, on the site plans, you can find this uh, section right here.
Beautiful, and it would be under what, what would they look for?
Uh, actually, on the, on the architectural plan, so this is on page. A dash eighty.
Okay, great.
And on the left-hand side, it just kind of goes through the district purpose and their answers for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Nathan, you have a cool. I'm sorry, did, oh, I'm sorry.
Um, well, one, I, I would like to also say it's very interesting um, to have a, a form base application before us, I, I um, really appreciate um, the opportunity to look at this, this is, uh, I think what the, the, the code is intent was, and um, potentially, you know, it's, it's form. My understanding of the form base is you meet the form, it's pretty cut and dry. Um, I, my question, I think the biggest thing I saw in the comments was um, stormwater. So I'm curious, what are this stormwater, what's the stormwater regulation for this property?
So this project does not trigger stormwater because it is under the twenty thousand square feet for a minor, um, forty thousand for a major, so what um, Matt has kind of commented is trying to just handle roof runoff.
Is there a require, is there a regulatory requirement for that?
This is where it kind of, no.
Okay.
They, we've asked, I know, uh, Matt's, some of Matt's comments was talking about that, it was, it was more of an ask, uh, cause it's not required, because they're technically under the twenty thousand square feet.
Is, is it feasible? Uh, so it, it's challenging, um, one, because it's a very small lot, um, obviously it's just over five thousand square feet, uh, most of which will be the building, and then when you get the footings in there, we, we did look at some subsurface options, and unfortunately it just does not work, uh, with setbacks requirements to the footings and whatnot. The, the. I, I can speak generally, the overall stormwater characteristics of this lot, under existing conditions, flow from the back of the property down towards Park Street and ultimately into the municipal drainage system. Um, so runoff from the site is currently going towards Park Street and into the catch basins in Park Street. We're not proposing to change that, and roof runoff is generally considered clean runoff, we are certainly open to trying to figure out some different options, um, unfortunately, those options are just limited on a site of this size. Um, but we're certainly willing to look into that.
That's an interesting point, right, there's no cars dripping.
No cars, fluids, no salt, exactly. Yep.
You're gonna, it's gonna be a flat roof, right, so you're gonna have interior roof drains, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to go to someplace.
Correct, yes, right, uh, so we'll make sure that those are not discharging on abutting properties and mimic the existing conditions um, to what we can, but we, we can certainly review that closer, uh, with the DPW, I know that that was a comment of theirs. Um, can I continue? Uh, so, look, the, the adjacent property, um, because uh, you know, that would be, at least when this form base code was proposed, that is like an anchor property to the, where, where the uh, bank.
Oh, yeah.
Formerly was, right, um, it's, it's kind of, it's a key property to the intent of the form base code as it wraps around Main Street to uh, Park. This is just a curiosity, but. What is the, is, is, what's the architectural opinion of the the uh, the gallery awning?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand.
It's a requirement.
It's, it's required in the code, uh, I, well, let me see, we have any ability to wave anything out of form base, okay, uh, nevermind.
Okay, cool. Um. So, I guess the, the question for me is, have, have you folks anticipated or have you had any discussion with abutting property owners regarding construction on the site, since you will be on their land?
We have not at this point, um, wanted to get through this, the, the opening of the public hearing and talk about that, that's certainly gonna be a construction sequencing problem, um, or something that we have to work through, um, during that process, but I am not aware of any discussions at this point.
Yeah, I, I just, this is very, very simple, the, there's an unusual closeness to a section of the parking lot from the abut to your, your property line and your, your project. So, one of the comments that was made was regarding snow removal, I think it was, and that the parking was covered, but in fact, it's open on the end, and the parking lot is right next door, so. I'm struck with how anyone's gonna handle snow from the abutting property as well, because.
Oh, you mean like plowing?
Plow it, you're gonna have to drag it back, but it will definitely drift into your building underneath the overhang with a, with any kind of a storm, so be aware, you might, that comment might come back again as to where you handle snow and how you dispose of snow, because it will be in there, even, even though it's covered. It will definitely blow in from the street, it'll blow in from this way, they'll plow it into.
Well, that, remember, that lot is vacant right now, no.
I understand, that's why I started by saying, the, the abutters may have to be cooperative.
Yes.
This case, everyone's gonna have to work together.
Yeah.
Pretty much, uh, the way I see it anyway, I mean, you can't possibly build that thing without everyone working together at this point in time. So. So with stormwater, we talked about the roof, I mean, it has to go someplace, so they, they gotta show us how they handle it.
Yeah, uh, and, and that was one of the comments, but they're not required to infiltrate and to handle that like that, like, like we would under our stormwater regulations.
Yeah, okay, but practical use.
Yes.
Plus, you're gonna have HVC equipment up there, it's gonna be condensated, it's up, whatever, it's gonna be water running on the roof. Um, so, there was a comment earlier that we could talk about the architectural, so can you go to the just the floor plan of the architecturals and I'll ask a question, I know we're not controlling the architectural, but.
Uh, which one?
That one.
That one?
Right, so typically, from my experience, when you have this kind of electricity coming into a building, you're gonna have to have a main electrical room, I would anticipate. It's not shown there anywhere, that I can see a main electrical room. Same thing would apply to the elevator, typically you have to have an elevator machine room, I don't see an elevator machine room. I see the bike area and whatnot, but just a comment that typically a sprinkler room, electrical room on the first floor somewhere, so just.
Yep, yeah, my understanding is, yeah, uh, that detailed construction and mechanical and engineering.
Comes in later.
Electrical plans would come in later, um, but I appreciate that comment.
Hey, do you mind if I, a quick one while we're on this, the trash?
Yeah.
How, I, I can see where the tenants would drop the trash off, but how do you get the trash out of that room and onto the street, what's the plan here?
Uh, so I think if we go straight, uh, straight out through the, um, through the parking and then straight out.
Oh, I see, oh, okay, I got it, you just go across, I see, alright, I got it, I got it, alright, I see now, alright, thank you. Yep.
Well, we have this view, um, is there gonna be any block at the back of the parking lot before the town's property?
Back here?
Ballards or a wall?
I think we had talked about ballards, let me. Excuse me.
Nothing's shown.
So, it shows plantings on the town's property, screening is on the other neighbor's site.
Right, correct, yeah, yeah, I think that's existing, um, vegetation up there.
Even a curb just keeps traffic.
Oh, yeah, there we go, yep.
Yep.
Ballard, okay.
Yeah, see that, that fence is not straight like that either, as you know, it jogs in from the abut. That fence goes up and jogs in.
Yeah, correct.
On, on, on this, it's shown, yeah.
The architectural do- doesn't have the exact, but it does on, on here.
But do we, under the form base code, uh, do we talk about the uh, materials that are used on the building? Does it give us, is there any discussion about the, I think you got, are you guys showing vinyl siding, for instance, in the upper floor or something like that?
Uh, I would have to defer.
No, we're not, I think the only thing that the form base code basically dictates is policing.
Yeah.
I thought I saw, wait a minute, did you say not?
We're not proposing, uh, we're not trying to put anything.
I wouldn't have said it. So, uh, you know, it's in March.
Is it because of this?
Yeah, someplace I thought it had a note there, so. Maybe not. You know, the A plans.
Don't see anything specifically called out.
That elevation, yeah. Vinyl siding.
On here.
Upper floors.
Isn't that the elevator service room at the top?
That's, I believe, the elevator.
At the, yeah, you would put it the service room at the top, right, and, and, yep.
Right, but there, there's a narrow, does that, do you agree or disagree with that?
Yeah, no, it does say vinyl siding right here, on this gray one.
But that's, that's all.
What, what are the, what are the proposed chairs for the extra, above the, the brick?
Like, everything is still, yeah, it's still schematic, it's just a show.
Okay.
Yeah, as far as the board.
Okay. Alright. Cool.
Ken, Julie, Nathan? I'd like to open up for public input, are there any questions or comments on the room? Yes?
Do I have to come up or you want to?
Yeah, come on up, so the way it works, you come up, you can have a seat right over here. And you just say your name and your address, sir, and then you can give us your question or comment.
Yes, I'm Corey Berversion, I live at twenty-eight West Street, Unit four B, um, I'm B, really close to where this um, is gonna be built, and I had a few concerns and also just kind of some questions too. Um, first of all, I'll just start off with the noise, so, the dominoes was proposed, uh, on Park Street before, there's also a noise concern there, just because it's so close to my property, and it's just something where obviously more people, more, more noises, it's the thing that you expect. With this, it just seems like there's gonna be too many people in one condensed area, and it's just gonna affect my daily life, I feel in a way it's not gonna be, uh, positive. The, for example, like I can hear the Dunkin's in the morning when people come up around like four in the morning, the train, obviously, things you expect, no, no big deal. With this, it's gonna be even closer, and I just worry that it's gonna be something, it's gonna be constant noise, that's just gonna really interfere with my life in a way that doesn't help, but I know I can't stop buildings going in where they should be, and I do want there to be development in the spot, uh, for three or five Park Street and one Park Street. Um, and I, I guess I can start off with a simple question, like why isn't this being built on one Park Street and three or five Park Street to make like one big, uh, multi-family kind, you know, just that makes more sense to me, but I don't know, but that's just, just different observation there, uh, but the noise is just the one thing I'm kind of concerned about too.
So, I, I think we could, the, the bylaws provide the out, regulated hours of construction, correct?
Yeah, there's a regu- I think you mean post, I think you mean post-construction.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, post-construction, you know, it's n- normal noise, so, you know, it's not really much, um, that we can regulate on that. Um, and in terms of why it's not being built together, uh, they're two separate owners.
I understood, I'm just saying, just, just in terms, I know it's a, it's a weird lot kind of situation.
Yeah.
Uh, the second thing was the parking, so I, I didn't understand that it's gonna have the six spaces in front of it, but then they're gonna take six space away from the town, which, as it is in air, we don't have enough parking downtown, even with the parking garage. I just feel like this is gonna be more of a problem than a, a benefit, and I could see a lot of po- problems coming from it as well, just in terms of like, people have to live in the, that unit, they got to cross the street every single time they wanna go across, create more traffic, more congestion, um, it just doesn't seem to stand with me for the people living there.
So they're actually not taking anything from the town, this are from a business owner that, that's um, right at the corner across the street.
So that's the, the restaurant there?
Yeah, from the restaurant.
Okay.
So it's not gonna take anything from the town.
Okay, I didn't know if that was town owned or not, that's, that's on me. Um, and then, what's that, that, sorry. Um, the other thing is just like the amount of people, just if it would be possible, I think in this case, regarding just how many it is, I just think it'd be if it half the size would probably be more beneficial just in terms of like, as the noise and also the parking and congestion, those are the things I was thinking about, just kind of because I know eventually they're gonna change the intersection there to be a traffic light, and I just worry that it's gonna be something where for me, as a person who drives through air a lot, and obviously infrequently walks around those areas, it just seems like it would just be a lot busier than it should be, just because of this. So, I just worry that it's just gonna become a lot more congested really quickly, so, just things like that. Um, and then also, I guess, another comment, it's not really related to me, living next to a bum, is also, I'm, I'm not understanding why there's a coffee shop going next to a coffee shop. There's a Dunkin's there already that services all of air pretty much, and I don't think we have a need for this, and there's no foot traffic there, besides people going to Dunk's or going down the street to like a laundromat or other things, so it's just.
It's not necessarily all right, it's, it's kind of like a placeholder, that, whether or not it's actually a coffee shop, I don't know.
And the other thing, that's at the discretion of the owner.
No, understood, and again, it's just a comment I just wanted to say, I just was understanding. But um, the final thing I'll close out with is just also, it gets kind of just like, the goal of this project is to bring more people to the center of air, which I understand, but I was just also thinking of like, there's a lot of developments in air recently that have not gone to this level or this scale of adding um, twelve people in one space, for example, twelve Newton Street right here, is gonna be two multi-families that's going in, and it's in the probably about this, you know, little smaller space, but it's in a large space that could fit more people, of course. And then down the road, you have the condos at forty-eight Central Ave and sixty Central Ave, those were recently built as well, and they aren't built to the point of having, you know, thirty, they could have thirty people there or more, it just, it depends on thirty families, it's just, you could fit a lot more people in these kind of spaces, and then, otherwise mentioned, is thirty-three Sandy Pond Road, which is being developed into four different condo units right now. So I'm just saying, there's a lot of land that was recently bought up and done for different purposes, I know it's all based on what owners wanna do, but I'm just saying, I just feel like those are more appropriate spaces for more, uh, big developments, um, just my observation, um.
Yeah, and just to touch on, so those are different zones.
Yeah.
There's different uh, things that are allowed and not allowed, um, so in the form base code, it, it's, the whole point of it is to have density.
Understood, yeah, so, those are just my observations, and again, I, I guess the noise is the main concern I have and the parking are the two, two main concerns I have, so just, if those are noted, that's something I would, I would like to provide. Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone online that wants, yep, Pauline?
Yes, Pauline.
Good evening, and I'll be very brief, I just wanna go back to parking, um, and town meeting. The, I, I remember asking a question regarding the applicability of the change in the bylaw, um, not necessarily to a specific project, but change, reducing the number of parking spaces from one to one-half directly impacts this particular property, which I believe the answer at town meeting was it was not retroactive. Tonight, I hear there may or may not be a difference in filing date, so I just wanted to remind you that, of that, because I, I, I remember speaking very succinctly about it at town meeting.
Yes, so.
Go ahead Danny, I'm sorry.
Uh, no, sorry, um, so at that time, the applicant had not amended their application, so, um, we, at that point, we, you know, the project that was submitted to me, I was, th- that's what I thought it was, so, the, the the mix-up did not occur until after town meeting that we note that, um, the legal notice had already been sent out and all that, we didn't notice it until after that.
So, I guess I'll ask a simple question, does the new bylaw apply or does the old bylaw apply?
That's what.
That's the question I have to get cleared up, and uh, even if it does apply, the way, so if it, if it doesn't apply, they're addressing it with the off-site, um, parking through the shared parking, uh, special permit. If it does apply, then they're, they're already in compliance.
They're all good, right, and I understand that, and I appreciate the clarification, and one other point I wanna make, if I'm not mistaken, Danny, this is the fourth form base code build since we adopted the um, change. The first was the pharmacy. The second was this, um, build across the street, which is a salon.
No.
I, now I've completely lost my mind on what the. Now I've completely lost my mind on what the.
Uh, forty-two Park Street? Yeah, that one is not in the Form Based Code, it's just outside.
Well, okay.
It's just outside.
It, it seems to be, and I remember from some of the hearings I went to, I thought it was, and then the twelve new, I'm sorry, the twelve Newton property is definitely a Form Based Code build, and, um, it's a two-family, uh, to clarify for the gentleman who spoke, it's not a two multifamily, it's a two-family home, um, not commercial, will never change its perpetuity or its, uh, affordability into perpetuity, y'all know what I'm talking about.
Yep.
Um, but I thought there was another fourth.
So.
Uh, Form Base.
Yeah, so, uh, so this is the first project that's actually going through s- uh, site plan review, other than the DMG project.
West Main.
Okay.
On West Main Street, West Main Street, as you know, that one got, um, withdrawn without prejudice.
Right, 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 right.
And then this is the first one that's actually going through the site plan review, that I know of, but may, maybe you're right about the air pharmacy, it might have come just bef- just after the Form Based Code was put in, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that one.
Nor am I, and it doesn't really matter, but I do want to give the, uh, this developer support, I think it's a great idea to improve the area, I like the Form Based Code idea. Um, so, uh, for what it's worth, my support there, I wouldn't question anything, and I hope they work out whatever the parking is, it doesn't matter to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Um, no hands.
We have a motion for continuance of the public hearing?
Anybody else in here?
Just a, one more comment, Mr. Chair, the, um, and probably directed internally to, to Danny. Is there, the, I understand the parking, the parking issue may be moot, um, but also, is there a means for the board to either recommend or require deed restriction to encourage, uh, carless, uh, tenants?
All this. Um, so, that's, that, so, um, this came up during the DMG discussion.
Correct.
The applicant threw that out to the board and said that they would be willing to do that. The board could take it upon themselves and condition it that way, but I think the applicant would then have a, um, a mean to be, i- i- if they didn't want that, they could appeal it.
Sure.
But it's, it, it makes it, it makes it much more difficult to get us, uh, a unit rented, if you require no car. But, the board could ask the applicant if they want to.
It'd be interesting, that's for sure.
Yeah. I think with the DMG project, I think they were looking more for a, how do we get, and this is just my opinion, how do we get this approved?
It could say we're gonna, we never even got to the parking.
Correct.
It was gonna be some.
Yeah, yeah, parking was such a hard thing for that site, whereas in this one, it's, it's not, it's not that, uh, it's not a difficult one.
So, through the, through the chairman, we haven't talked about inclusionary housing in this project, can we talk about that tonight?
Yes, so this project does trigger the inclusionary housing, so, um, and, uh, we've already talked with the applicant about this, uh, they have one unit that is gonna be deed restricted, um, affordable housing. I've already talked with Alicia about this, um, and Alicia will, you know, be in contact with them at some point, once we get further along in the process, but, uh, one unit is deed restricted, um, and it's eighty percent AMI.
Good, thanks. Anything else, folks? Okay.
This is how the Form Based Code is supposed to work.
Yeah, this is.
The review of the, the comments.
Yeah, well.
We're gonna leave that completely to. We get all the response.
Yeah, we'll leave it to the next meeting, so that we can actually have a more substantive, uh, conversation.
Thank you.
Alright, so I will make a motion.
Alright.
That we continue the public hearing for three-to-five Park Street, map twenty-six parcel one oh five, to our next planning board meeting, which would be on.
December ninth.
December ninth.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ken?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye. Excellent, thank you, so we will get to, thank you, we'll see you, uh, in December.
Very much.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. We have project status updates.
Before we get the project status updates.
What you got?
Um, just to announce to the board, so, after, um, Wednesday, I will be in the o- I will not be in the office until January fifth. I will be on leave, technically I'll still be working about ten to fifteen hours a week from home, I'll be accessible, email, you know, phone, but, um, I'm gonna be doing about ten to fifteen hours a week, I'll be home with my son, um, until January fifth, when I come back in. So, internally, we've already, um, started to, we've already kind of nailed everything down as to how things are gonna be handled. Um, I will put on an e- on my email, kind of like a descriptive, uh, uh, email, just kind of saying that I'll be out of the office, checking emails periodically, anything urgent regarding, um, current projects or, uh, you know, or something regarding the planning board, Sam will be the point of contact, and anything versus, uh, about construction, Heather will be the point of contact. So that, um, we have someone who can deal with, uh, one of those situations.
Mike too, right, I mean, yeah.
And then of course, my candles, you know, anything related to the building, uh, permits and all that stuff, but Heather would just be the point of contact in regards to, um, like, and someone calls, oh, the, the, you know, someone's not following something in their apartment, Heather would be the point of contact at that point. She would, she would talk to them and then contact me, we would discuss it, and then we, you know, we'd go from there. But, so if, I will be here in person for the meetings, um, so, um, there shouldn't really be much of a change with that, but just so that everyone knows, I won't be in the office.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes. Project status updates, um, so Stratton Hill, this has been a little bit difficult to try to get, um, everyone, uh, able up, able to go out there, as well as having them have the site safe for when the board could go out there, um, we've been kind of going back and forth, playing phone tag, um, um, Attorney Collins and I, so we're trying to find, uh, a good time for that, I will reach out to the board once I've nailed down a time of when they can, a couple of dates when they can make it work.
True.
Um, I know Thursdays are kind of what you guys have been going, but it may have to be another day.
That's fine with me.
Can you just give us an update, maybe Julie can give us an update, on the sewer treatment plant.
Oh, sewer treatment.
Oh, sewer treatment. Not the sewer treatment, the sewer pump station on Wright Way, I think was, wasn't.
Can you, can you actually?
I don't know any of that.
This was part of the, um, plan that they were gonna compensate the town for that work, and that work, I understood, started, anybody know if that's done?
It's not done, it's halfway.
I know they got their approvals, I know they've been working, I mean, I know they started the construction, whether or not, um, compensation has occurred, I don't know, I'll reach out to Matt on that and see where he is with that, but I know they're in contact, they've been discussing, and, um, it's been ongoing, so.
It was, it was a little, it was kind of a side issue of the approval, but they were definitely gonna be compensating the town, so.
Yeah. I was curious. I will follow up with Matt on that one.
Okay, thanks.
And I'll, I'll follow up with, uh, okay, and ask, ask him that, uh, Frank and Bartlett, Dillison Roy, just to, uh, formalize the process.
Yes.
Um, I did wanna note, um, that there is the ongoing, um, uh, utility line work that's going on there, so, when Danny was ta- talking about having, having a site safe to go in, in and out of, there, there's only so much Moulton can, can, control.
It's not bad, it's, uh, it's not bad.
Yep.
It's intimidating to me.
Depending, depending on what shows up, yes. Um, the, it, uh, from what I've heard, the, the site is shaping up nicely, um, we've been doing the ongoing, uh, SWIP inspections, which have been forwarding to Danny and Heather, and, um, uh, the Moulton Construction has been running a pretty clean, clean site, if there's anything that we thought needed to be addressed, they, they jump right on it and take, take care of it, um, so it's been.
Weather's been great, so there's been no washouts, if, no issues with runoff, this, all that stuff, we've thought about, considered about.
We, we have had a handful of, of decent-sized rain events, um, to speak to that, and the site's been.
Clean?
It's clean, I've, I've worried about it, but, but, yeah, the, the. Site's been clean, so.
The grading changed so dramatically that it changed runoff quite a bit.
Yes.
Yep.
Um, and also to update, I know that the CMP is getting amended, that they're gonna be, um, they did, um, I guess they were close to finalizing the new location for the turtle habitat.
Yeah, um, we went out there recently with, um, Dave Moulton and, uh, Survey Low located an area for the turtle habitat, I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, it's way up at the top of the original, of the original road, near, near where that, that, the, that new wetland showed up from the ATVs.
Yep.
Apparently the turtles like that area, so, um.
Alright, good.
Thank you. Anything else on Stratton, out the warm air?
There was some, there was, again, this was a kind of a side issue, but there was, the open space in Stratton Hill, I'm not gonna bring up, also included pieces of property that were not in the open space, they were owned under the daughter's name, I think, um, back in the.
Fox Truck, Fox something.
Back in that back right hand corner, but there was a discussion that he was gonna add that.
He would, well, he was looking that, uh, he would potentially give that to the town, but he, I don't know if that's ever been.
I don't know if that's been formalized.
It wasn't, it wasn't ever formalized, 'cause it wasn't part of actually the application.
So we'll just forget that for now.
Yep.
Yeah, but I, I, I can reach out to Attorney Collins and see.
I mean, quite a lot of time has moved on, so sometimes these things come back up again.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, but we, I know that we have been having back and forth with, um, Fish and Wildlife and the various state departments on, on the open space, so.
Good.
And I do owe a quarterly update, I think in the next week or so, um, should I, so if I forward that to, I'll send it to you and Heather.
Yeah, yeah, send it to both of us.
I did like, like, the last time, and.
I'll still be, I'll still be looking through that and stuff, so, uh, you can just send it over to both of us.
So it's happening at forty-two Park Street.
Good to go.
Good to go, thank you.
Thank you, happy Thanksgiving.
Um, so forty-two Park Street, so right now, we are, we've been waiting for a rainstorm that Matt, myself and Heather could go to and witness. We just haven't been able to pinpoint one that we can actually witness the rain and see how it's functioning, um, we have some concerns because we, we, we don't think it was, um, paved correctly, we don't think that the, the contours as they are out there are actually leading the water to the catch basin, as it's supposed to be, uh, as you remember, the catch basin is, if you go out there, it's in the center of the road, when it was supposed to be on the curb, on the curving.
Put in where they showed it on the plan, it was supposed to, the paving was supposed to pitch that way.
No, the curving, so if you look at, the Asbeld shows it in the center.
Oh, the Asbeld shows it in the center.
The curving, I mean, the plan that was originally approved showed it on the edge of the curving, but what happened was, they installed it where the drain manhole was, uh, was shown on the plan.
Now I get it, I saw it, I mean, I went out.
Yeah, so what happened is, post-construction after, like, after they had uninstalled and paved, we went out there, and we were looking at the plans and noticed that, and they said that they would be able to fix it, so we were like, okay, let's wait and see what they can do. We had talked about, you know, making sure everything pitched that way, and when they first paved it, the first person that did it did a terrible job, not, the paving job, I've never seen something so bad. The second guy that did the paving did a much better job, so if you go out there right now, they did a very, very good job, it just not pitched the right way, so.
Subsurface was never graded right, the, the right.
Yeah, so there, there was a lot of, in, in the Asbeld plan and the letter that came along with it, they talked about the discrepancies, and Matt and I and Heather have already kind of discussed all of those. Our biggest concern right now is just the way the, the, the stormwater, um, where it's going. It does not look like it's going to the catch basin, it looks like it's just going along the side of the curving and then going off of the, and. Yeah, there's, it goes straight through the gu- the dumpster concrete pad, and then it also looks like it's going along the curving to the back of the lot, and then going into where the wetland is, so.
I have an additional concern, which I just thought of the other day when I went over there. I believe that driveway was supposed to be ADA compliant on its slope, to bring the people from the back lot to walk up. There was supposed to be a slope there, that was, the slope is pretty steep, I thought there was a, a.
The top, the top is ADA, the top of it is ADA compliant, not the back, that's why the, the parking, the, the handicap parking is up at the top. That's why the ramp and all that is at the top. Yeah, but, but that's why it's, 'cause the, the, they were never gonna be able to make that ADA compliant that hill, 'cause there were always steps there too.
I think it's, I think it's much steeper than what was shown on the plans.
Oh, it is, yeah, it is, but they're still under the ten percent, uh, that they're required to be.
And I noticed they put on, they didn't use Cape Cod burn, they used like, that, what do you call it, bread loaf, you can curb, that's gonna get smashed in the first snowstorm, it's gone.
Yeah, well, as of right, I mean, we'll see how it. Yeah, as of right now, it's, it, it, um, it, it's fine, it, it does the same job.
Right, but, it, that stuff like that has to be backed up with material like loom and seed and whatnot, and to support the.
These are all concerns that we've, we have right now, that we just have not been able to have a meeting with them to discuss, we just, the, the biggest thing for us is to get the stormwater thing down, and, and we just have been having an issue to really find a rainstorm that can show us how the water's functioning.
If I may, um, once again, Frank, we're partnering with Dillison Roy, um, what I, one thing that I've done in past lives as a musical engineer was, we, we brought a water truck out.
Oh.
Um, at times to, to test, if, 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 if the weather's not cooperating. We brought a water truck out and then, you know, o- opened it halfway just to, just to, just to see.
That's a good idea.
There's also a fire department right down the road.
Yeah, I, the fire department, I don't wanna get, that's a little bit of a, but the water truck, I, I will talk with the DPW about that, that's a great idea, I think me and Matt can actually get that. That'll be actually a great idea to get that done quicker.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you on that one, that's a great.
Yes.
It's really good. So, I will, I'll talk to Matt on that one, actually, that's a great idea. Um, we had actually, Heather had suggested, why don't we open up a hydrant, I was like, there's no hydrant in the area.
Maybe they would anticipate, or get a lot less slack from now Park Street people, if they just approached ahead of time, this is not the planning board, this is the developer or whatever, so if we all, citizens, boards, select boards, Jamie Eldridge, if we all tried to do just a little bit better, I think it would be a much happier community.
Thank you.
Now you can adjourn.
You have, you have motions on the table?
Yes, moved.
Meeting's adjourned, good night, everyone, have a wonderful Thanksgiving.